I called order the Hinckley Board of Zoning Appeals. At Wednesday, July 26 at seven o'clock. Call the roll.
Hello.
She has an excuse to have some. Here.
Les.
Here.
Schaefer.
Here.
Luebel.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Romanowski.
Here.
In the audience, our trustee Augustine, zoning inspector Wilson. Are there any trustees virtually?
All right, this meeting is being recorded for transcription purposes only and written minutes and attachments, if any, will serve as the official record of this meeting. Personal conversation should be saved until after the meeting so that those attending virtually may be able to hear. We have two hearings tonight. And the first one will start is application 0275. And the Hinckley Township Board of Zoning Appeals acts within the authority of section 519 of the Ohio Revised Code and exercises its powers as provided under chapter seven and 13 of the Hinckley Township zoning regulations. All public hearings are open to the public. All persons wishing to testify must do from the podium, must identify themselves and give their residence and address and must be sworn in. Evidence and testimony must be pertinent to the hearing. It is the chairman's discretion to limit personal comments, personal attacks, opinions, editorializing and/or repetitious statements or testimony or evidence previously given. Disruptive persons will lose the right to remain at the hearing and personal attacks will not be tolerated. Okay, uh, the first one is AP 0275. And you want to read the description that was in the.
The Hinckley Township Board of Zoning Appeals will hold two public hearings on Wednesday, July 26, 2023, at seven o'clock PM at the administration building located at 1410 Ridge Road, which is on the southwest corner of the intersection of State Roads 3 and 303. Subject of the first hearing is as follows. An application for variance AP 0275 was submitted by applicant Helen Scott Husken Builders on behalf of John and Brittany Kaminski, property owners of 1862 Bellis Road, Hinckley, Ohio, permanent parcel number 01603C09039, requesting three variances to split 28.02 acre parcel into two lots with one lot not meeting the one minimum lot width at building line of 175 feet, two minimum lot width at street right of way of 175 feet, and three minimum side yard setback of 15 feet for existing pond. Inspection of this property will take place on Saturday, July 22, 2023, at 10 o'clock AM. Zoning reference, chapter six, district regulation subsection 6R1.4B, 6R1.4C, and chapter four, general regulations, section 4.11 feet of the Hinckley Township zoning regulations. Copies of these applications and other supportive material will be available for public viewing from the date of this notice, the date of hearing at the zoning office located in the administration building at 1410 Ridge Road, Monday, 10 a.m. to 6 p.m., Tuesday through Thursday, 9 a.m. to 2 p.m., and Friday, 9 a.m. to noon. Information may also be found on the Hinckley website at www.hinckleytp.org under community tab, news and events, title Board of Zoning Appeals, public hearing. All interested parties are asked to attend this hearing or set written comments to the Hinckley Township Board of Zoning Appeals, P O box 344, Hinckley, Ohio, 44233. Log into www.hinckleytp.org for Zoom option to observe slash listen only. Must be in person to speak slash participate in the meeting.
Okay, notice of this application was given in a local newspaper and the applicant application has been available for public review and comment. I will now call the Hinckley Township zoning secretary, ask whether he or she received any other documentation, which was the letter that you just passed out to us.
Yes, so I, there was a letter received today, and I don't know if you would like to read that into the record.
Yeah, we could, I guess, yeah. Hinckley zoning, I understand that the property on 1862 Bellis is to be divided into two lots with one house only to be built. As long as there will be no development, I vote in favor of this variance, and it's Linda T Y. I'm not sure her last name. Now, and she's from 1865 Bellis Road. A site inspection was done on Saturday, the 22nd. Can you pull the, make sure everybody got the documentation we received and attended the site inspection? Yes, site inspection on the 22nd, and I have the documentation.
Lesna?
Yes, Saturday, the 22nd, and the documentation.
Schaefer?
Inspected on the 22nd, and I have received the packet.
Yes, and yes, 722 inspection. I did a site visit on the 25th, an independent visit yesterday. I have the documentation.
Thank you.
Each member of the Board of Zoning Appeals has been provided a copy of the application and the documents. Uh, let's see. Does the applicant or interested party object to any of the communications being included by the board as evidence? I think so. Written communications from persons not present this evening may include communications that are not made by affidavit. Because these communications are made by persons not under oath, they are not accepted by this board. I also note that written communications may include some writings by affidavit by persons that are not present this evening and therefore cannot be subjected across examinations. These affidavits, therefore, will not be given much weight, if any, in the decision of the board. This board has a power to grant an application's request for variance. All testimony must be given from the podium and all comments must be directed to or through the board and not to members of the audience. All questioning, cross-examination of the applicant will be done in this manner. All people that wish to give testimony will be sworn in individually. So, call up the first time.
Mr. Schrader.
Yeah.
Do we want to make a note, and I apologize for not doing this, that Mr. Schrader and Mr. Romanowski are filling the seats.
Okay, yeah, we should. Tonight, the chairman couldn't be here. She was traveling and getting in late from an airport, or so she's excused. Filling in would be Tom Schrader. And then Lindsay is recusing herself from the one hearing because of a job conflict with the thing, and so Mr. Romanowski will be filling in for that. So we do have a board of five. All right, I call up, I guess, the first witness and let's swear you in. Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under God?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, it's state your name.
My name's Scott Schreier. I'm with Helen Scott Builders.
Okay. And, yeah. Can you state your name?
Oh, Brittany Kaminski.
Okay, do you swear to tell the whole truth, that nothing but the truth as you shall answer under God?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to tell us about what's going on up there?
Yeah, so, um, and her husband, John, could not be here, so it's going to be the two of us here tonight. They purchased 28 acres, then came to me, and we've been designing a home. The 28 acres has 191 feet of road frontage. So, we would like to build an additional home. It's going to be about 700 feet off the road. Just a driveway going back and home will be, be about 700 feet back. And we just don't have enough road frontage, so a couple of things, we don't have enough frontage for the, to meet the 175 to keep the existing home, and then our 55-foot-wide driveway for our flag lot. So that is, I guess, the first thing, and then the second, we have a pond that almost spans the whole width of the property. So, to get behind it where we'd like to build the house, it's going to straddle the property line. We actually have to fill part of it just to get the driveway by. That's kind of the gist of it, the pond and the lot width.
Yeah.
All right.
I ask a clarifying question. Do you want to stand up?
You only address the board.
Yeah.
You do not address down.
You'll have your chance. Okay, you know, there you, you, there's three variances you're looking for. You didn't mention the third one.
Um, so it'd be what, lot width, lot width at the building setback, and then the pond crossing the property line, I believe, is. Yeah, I think are three. Yeah, lot width at the road, lot width at the building line, and then the pond.
Okay, um, are you the applicant?
Yeah, yeah, my, my husband John and I, but he cannot be here with us.
That's fine, no problem there at all. Were you aware of our zoning code when you bought the property?
No, we had no idea.
Okay, that, that's fine.
We just saw a lot of land and we're like, oh, cool, we can build in, we can build a house here, and then we realized, you know, we had the house that was already on it, and, um, yeah, we would love to be able to keep that.
Okay, well, I don't know how familiar you are with BZA and its purpose and what we're allowed to do and not do and things like that.
Very familiar at all.
Talking in the parking lot, and she said, how many, how many, can we build a couple barns? I'm like, we'll have to look at zoning, so, yeah, that's.
Right, well, uh, this board over here, if you have a hardship of some type, let's say you have a ravine running right down the middle of your property, well, you're not going to build in the ravine. So, you're going to have to go to the left side or the right side of it. But now you're going to be violating the setback laws. So you come up in front of us, you say, here's my hardship, and then we decide whether or not to give you a variance on how close the building is to the side yard. So that's the general gist. You have to have some type of a hardship or a practical difficulty of some type. In this case, here, I'm looking at it, you got, you know, just a hair over 28 acres. And we have a thing called rear lot development, which is basically what you're going to be using for the one lot. And when you come in front of the board, I'm not saying that this is a must, but you should be able to try to file for the least amount of variances as possible. And it's going to be up to the, you know, board, whether or not you, you know, are doing, asking for too many, or maybe, and it has happened at times because nobody's perfect, and possibly the zoning inspector actually missed something that would need a variance, so then, you know, we'll tell you, well, actually you need another one. Well, here, with this property here, to get rid of one of the variances, you could actually put in two seven-acre, you know, lots back here, because you only need a minimum or not a maximum, 55 foot of frontage. So you can figure that out either way. Now, the, the pond, because if it was situated way back in the property, that wouldn't be a problem. But no matter how you're going to put a driveway in and such like that, yes, the pond, at least in my estimation, you're going to need variances for, there's no way around that. I, I couldn't figure it out. But you could add just around a little over three acres to the front lot that you want to put, which is called split parcel number two, and you can get your seven acres over there, and because this really, with that frontage, would be a non-conforming lot. And that's one thing that a very good argument can be made, that we don't have the authority to create a non-conforming lot. So if you made two seven, at a minimum, seven acre lots, and obviously you're probably going to do a minimum on what would right now be split parcel number two, and then subtract the four acres then from the larger lot. Would you be open to that?
Um, so I'm just, I'm trying to like.
But just, just to clarify what he's going through, is what you're trying to do is make a non-conforming lot, and that's zoning, that's something we cannot do a variance on. So otherwise, we, we cannot give you less than 175 feet, because it is a non-conforming.
Okay. So, I mean, the answer is going to be, yeah, we definitely have to look into it if that's our options, only we had a, an ideal world, you know, house location picked out. There's a little bit of topography up and down on that lot as you get back in there. So, I don't know exactly where the seven acres is going to land based on where, otherwise, I don't think it would make a difference.
No, I mean, we just, we wanted our house still close enough to the front, so that the front of our home that we're building is looking out, like, onto the pond. Yeah. Um, and also the topography thing, because we just, we wanted it to be, it will be on the, like, highest point of the property, which is ideal, like, for us to have.
Well, th- this is where you get to find builder like him.
Yeah.
And you say, hey, do I have to have, you know, just square everything off? No, you, I'm on a, I'm on a rear lot development, and both of my neighbors are. And it ends up that my lot ends up, once it opens up, is almost a perfect square. But the other two, yeah, the other two lots, especially the one to the south of me, I mean, you should see all the 90-degree angles in that lot.
Overhill on the pines is nothing.
That's 533 feet wide back there, so.
Okay, okay.
So, I mean, you, you can shape this thing any way you want to get the view you want and things like that. There's also, I'm not going to, I mean, I got my ideas how to do this. I'll be honest with you. But I'm not going to give them to you. That's not my job. Okay, but there is also two things that you learn in your zoning classes and such like that. And one is called a scenic easement. So if there's something you go, I want to be able to see this, or whatever, you hold all the aces, okay? You can go talk to a lawyer and say, this is what I want to do. Can it have a scenic easement? There's also construction easements. You know, I got one of those, because my neighbor built a pond, which now dammed my yard. So he gave me an easement to run a pipe into the pond he was building.
Well, you know, I think we're going a little too far on this right now.
Yeah, but what I'm, I'm just saying, that while you're looking at all this bit, I'm not telling you you have to use those. I'm just saying, I want to give you different options, so when you're looking at this, you're, you're not coming back here and asking for something that you may not be happy with. I'm trying to make it so you.
I appreciate that.
You come back.
So just so I'm understanding, like, you're saying the answer will be absolutely no.
I cannot, I cannot.
Answer that, but.
But we have to have 175 feet.
Yeah, right.
For. Because otherwise, we are creating a non-conforming lot.
But you don't have.
We cannot have the authority to create a non-conforming lot. So if we go ahead with this, I mean, it's, it's your choice, either going ahead with it or
Okay.
Which word I want to use?
Withdrawal.
Yeah.
Motion right now.
Okay.
Or we can take a vote.
Uh, no, no, he can ask for an extension and come back next month, and you'd have to talk to Tom about that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll remind you that on a rear lot, the building width is.
200 feet.
And the setbacks are 50 feet all around, so you keep 50 feet from the side and
Yeah, it's still.
That 200 feet might be crucial to, to get your.
Well, the way I, I looked at this.
At the narrowest it can be, through our jogs, the narrowest it could be would be 200?
No, no.
Okay.
The, the jogs have to stay at 55 feet.
Okay.
Okay.
Any.
But once you get to where you want to build the house, you got to have 200 feet.
So. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, that helps. Perfect.
But anyways, you want to look at 6R1F. And it's titled rear lot development, so that'll give you all the information you have to, you know, figure out on.
So if we figure out that portion, then we're just going to be talking, no matter what, the pond, because we're only 30 feet off the property line, one side.
Yeah, the, the pond, as much as I look at it, I don't see any way around the pond.
Yep. Okay. Okay, I think we just withdraw that and I think we withdraw it and come back with, with a plan to, to meet seven acres and still achieve what we're looking for, that matches zoning.
Right, so. Anybody want to make a motion? I mean, are you asking?
Yeah.
Well.
It's up to them whether they want to go ahead.
That's what I'm saying. Do you want to go ahead with the hearing, or do you want to postpone it to next month, or the?
If we went ahead, they can't create a lot anyway, so they don't have the power.
It would have to be re-advertised and everything.
It'll be different variants, that's correct.
Be completely, completely different variants, if you need a variant.
Yeah, it would just.
You may not need a variant. Yeah, you may not have to come in front of the board.
Everything in zoning, you won't have.
It'll just be the pond that we would have.
Which has already been advertised.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I would say, or can we, can we just withdraw those two and only apply for the, do the variance just for the pond while we're here?
You do, but here's the problem with that. If you, well, I'm not sure over here on this one, but I would think if you postpone everything, then you haven't had a hearing, and you may have to get a fee for a continuance. And
Extension.
Or an extension, whatever term we're using, which would be a lot cheaper than fi- and filing for another totally brand-new hearing, because that'd be like about $500. So.
So it's better to continue and then just ask for a continuance to come back?
Well, that, that's up to you. I'm not going to tell you.
Yeah, so.
Is the board, is there a reason why we've had other applicants remove part or part of their request?
You can always remove.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what I'm suggesting now is that if the applicant prefers to, they could review, remove actions, what was it, one and three or whatever, two.
Yeah, one and two.
Just remove the two we're asking for. And just ask for the one.
If, if needed, yeah.
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 If needed, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think we should proceed that way, just strike the two for the lot width at the building, and, yeah, we'll make that happen, yeah. Yep, we'll just, if we could strike those two, and then just ask for the pond, the setback from the property line for the pond, just proceed with that. I think that would be ideal.
Not, not, you're not talking about now, though.
Okay, can we now, while we're here?
I, I would suggest that you come up with a new plan, so, first, you may not need it.
Yeah.
I, I think, I mean, there's no way, it goes almost property line to property line.
Yeah, the, the pond, the way I looked at it, I don't see how, unless they fill that pond in.
We'd have to fill about 50 feet of the pond to make it without.
Yeah, but is it going, I don't know if it's going to cross a property line or not, then.
It, yeah, well, right, yeah, the way it is.
Yeah, right now it is.
Yeah.
So, and then that, that problem right there, that's not on the agenda or hasn't, and it hasn't been advertised.
I would suggest that you go back to the drawing board.
The first, okay.
Yeah.
I would, okay.
Then you have all the right measurements and everything, you're not working around something. You still have this on the table if you need it.
Okay. Yeah.
Right, it might, might, just right, yeah.
I, I think one of the things we were requesting, I mean, we'll come back next month, that's fine. I just thought one of the varieties where we were requesting were the setback from the property line to the pond. I think that was one of ours.
Yes.
I don't, I don't think we'll modify that next month.
Oh, that's fine.
We're still going to ask for the same.
Fifty foot shed back now.
Yeah.
When you go to rear lots. See, we, we had a, they currently have a 30 foot shed back from the side lot line. I don't think it's going to hurt you to wait.
Okay, we'll do that, and then we'll talk and make sure we're, have the right, right figures.
Get all your ducks in line.
Yeah, I don't want you making a snap decision.
Okay. That's good.
So you're officially requesting an extension?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll officially request an extension, yep.
Okay, I'll make a motion to extend AP 0275 for further information and redesign.
Second.
Take a vote. Yes.
Lesna?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Schrader?
Yes.
Romanowski?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the guidance.
Okay, you want to take a five minutes? Want to take a five minutes?
Yeah.
Or do you want to go right into it?
Yes.
We don't.
Okay.
We do?
Yeah. Yeah. You don't hear.
We've got it.
No, we have to.
I know, is this, is this action on the first, this guy, whoever, wants to speak.
Yeah, I have a question.
You have to step up the podium. Name and, and address, please.
My name is Ron Brightcrans. I live at 1888 Bellis Road, right next door to the Kaminski's on the western boundary. We have a common boundary.
Where you in?
Yeah, we are.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth as you shall answer under God?
Yes.
Okay. Fire away.
Okay, as I mentioned before, I live right next door to the Kaminski pro- property. Their western boundary is my eastern boundary. The concerns I have regarding the stormwater problem that may be created by the variance to your question, and I'm not sure whether this is the appropriate time or forum to give you my opinion on that matter.
Yeah, you absolutely can give us your opinion.
Okay, like I said, in view of, you know, these recent developments, I wasn't sure.
Well, they may.
Whether or not it's relevant.
Based on the, on the next hearing, so.
But you're.
Well, it all has to do with the putting the driveway and getting close to the pond and the ramifications of that particular variance, so I think it's relevant, but I just want to make sure.
So that, so that variance may change, so it, it may or may not be relevant, but you're always welcome to speak as a citizen.
Okay, thank you.
May I add? There'll be a stormwater permit from Menada County, and they'll actually be the ones that look at your concern.
Okay. Right, yeah, the, the board really doesn't deal in stormwater. And unless some kind of a variance, which I don't know what would be needed, maybe building a dam or something, I, I have no idea. But we really don't get involved with stormwater because, which I was going to tell you after your comments, but since Tom brought it up, we don't, for the most part, I mean, there are hearings that we have had where people have said, do you understand the kind of water that comes across our lots, you know, and stuff like that? And we have taken that into consideration, so that's why I don't have a problem hearing what you have to say, but the hearers have really nothing to do with this. It's stormwater.
Well, I'll give my presentation anyway, maybe quicker just to give it. I just figured this, like, to pass out. My reason for being here tonight is to share my concerns that the proposed lot split will have an adverse effect, impact on the stormwater management of this area. Figure A is a partial layout showing only the front portion of the Kaminski property. The thick lines show the. The thick lines show the boundary of that portion of the Kaminski property. The primary purpose of this drawing is to focus on the pond area. More specifically, the purpose of the drawing is to show two elements of the pond area that are not shown in the variance application. The elements of the pond area not shown in the variance application are the French drain and the underground pipe. Just in case somebody would just happen to not know what a French drain is, it's essentially a hole that you dig, put gravel in, and is designed to accumulate water and can often be connected with a pipe to drain that water to a different location. The underground pipe transfers the stormwater collected by the French drain to the east side of the pond, where it is empty to a Hinkley designated water course as defined in the Hinkley Township zoning regulations. I have another figure here that is from the Hinkley zoning regulations. Figure C is derived from the Hinkley Township repairian map. The thick lines are directly from an enlargement of a portion of the repairian map. All annotations on the drawing are mined. The pond is shown in the middle of the drawing together with the French drain and the underground pipe. Please note that the underground pipe empties directly into the Hinkley designated water course, as does the pond overflow, which is not shown in the drawing. Figure B is similar to figure A, but shows more property west of the Kaminski property line. Recall from your onsite inspection that the property west of the Kaminski property has a significant slope that is funneled by the contour of the land to a point at the Kaminski property as shown by reference point one. The hatch lines on the drawing show the path of the stormwater runoff. As shown in figure B, the area drained by this watershed is approximately five acres. It should also be noted that the change in elevation from the highest point of the watershed to the lowest is approximately thirty-two feet. Prior to the construction of the pond, the stormwater would have flowed through the natural contour of the land, which at that time would have been similar to the adjoining properties and into the Hinkley designated water, water course. In fact, if the Hinkley repairian map was created prior to the construction of the pond, it probably would have extended the Hinkley designated water course across the entire width of the Kaminski property. When the pond was constructed, the French drain and underground pipe were installed in order to comply with Ohio law, which requires that a landowner is generally required to accept the water that flows onto his property in a natural water course. In other words, cannot obstruct a natural flow of water from an adjacent property. The pond bank is higher than the point at which the stormwater enters the Kaminski property. Thus, if the French drain were to cease, uh, to work, both the Kaminski and Brightcrans properties would be flooded. The current French drain is approximately forty-five years old. The, the French drain is partially filled with sediment and organic matter which washed down the slope over the years. In addition, multiple large trees have been allowed to grow in close proximity to the French drain with the possibility of the tree roots clogging the French drain. Even further, the variance contemplated the construction of a driveway right next to the French drain plus the partial filling of the pond in close proximity to the French drain. This will substantially increase the amount of sediment that the French drain is exposed to. If this stormwater drainage problem has to be addressed in the future, the location of the French drain will require the closing of the driveway with no access to the house by safety vehicles. Depending on whether the driveway is gravel or concrete, this could close access to the house by safety vehicles for two to four days or more. Due to the steep banks, trees brush, and the water course on the other side of the pond, it is not feasible to use that side for access. The proposed split would also prevent any correction to any stormwater management problem since the proposed backland would not have access to repair the underground pipe. The backland lot would have to be granted an easement in order to have the right way to do any such repair. I strongly recommend that the stormwater management problem be referred to the soil and water folks for their input with regard to both the drainage problem and the easement language before granting any variance.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure the applicant, that'll be good information for them to consider.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
One motion for adjourned, uh, this meeting?
So, yeah. Have a motion to adjourn this first hearing.
So.
Second. All neighbors, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So this meeting is adjourned at seven thirty-six.